February eighth and pledge of allegiance David.
I pledge allegiance to the state of so and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Linda Roca.
Stand by.
Any big issues? Councilmember reporting, councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Officially absent, but watching Brown Act won't let him, won't let councilmember Sanchez be officially here, but we're happy to have him here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Here.
And Mayor King.
Here. Uh, any reordering of the agenda?
Done tonight.
Public comments. Larry, did you have a public comment or did you want to speak on something specifically?
I was gonna speak specific.
Okay, go ahead.
You, uh. There and city council. I just wanted to, to speak tonight and I wanted to thank specifically Scott Wolf. Uh, I had a chance to sit down with him last week. And talk about urban growth boundary. He is tasked, I believe, with coming up with, um. A, uh. For the November ballot, coming up with a proposal for an ordinance to either keep our existing urban growth boundary. Or expand it, or do away with it, as I understand that's coming for the, for the November ballot. Because it expires urban growth boundary, the existing one expires in next year. So. And so he, he asked a number of folks who had been involved in, in the last. Perfocal with the urban growth boundary some years back. And I didn't want to repeat, uh, some of the, uh, more disagreeable aspects. Wanted to kind of. Have a consensus in, in the city of. Power. You know, of, of what people would like to see in, in regards to sphere of influence in the urban growth boundaries. So. So I was one of the folks he, uh, was honored to be one of the folks he asked me to talk to and went over some, some ideas and. And some proposals of your growth boundary. So. My, my, I might can, um. So I was really happy to do that and, uh, but did bring up some concerns and I just wanted to. To tell you what I, what I've learned about this, this process. In, in that we have an existing urban growth boundary, which essentially reflects. The, the, the boundaries of our city. And he had some proposals that, you know, expanded it here and there to the north, to the, the south, to the west. And, um, but they had very sketchy ideas about, you know, what they wanted to do in these areas. And one of the big concerns was the. The state mandated, um, affordable housing mandates. So. And he wanted to accommodate that. Do we go up in the city? Do we go out? That kind of a thing. And I think what he, what, um, and so I, I took my, I took what he showed me and showed it to some, some other folks in town. And one, one interesting thing that came out of that was the, uh, that. Saying, wait a minute, where's, where's downtown? Why are we worrying about expanding our urban growth, the. Uh, boundaries when we need a downtown, you know, let's get going with the avenue of flags. Yeah. And other, other things that they had more. More interested. Um, but also. The big, uh. The big comment that I got back was if we're going to expand. It, our urban growth boundary at all, and maybe there's some good reason to do that. They want to see very clear planning, very specific city plans. For, uh, to that effect and enforceable planning guidelines. Such that if we're going to expand in a certain direction, they want to know exactly what's going to be there. Um, what will be allowed to be there? What resources are going to be needed? Well, what infrastructures is. Um, is, is going to be needed, traffic, water, sewer, all those things, power. And so, so that is one lesson I got out of, and that is going to be my big comment back, back to him as. If we're going to expand, let's make sure that it is, um. That it is well planned, it is well thought out, it is, and we can afford in many ways to, uh. Uh, to do that expansion. And again, I just wanted to thank Scott for, for, for doing that. He seems to be well ahead. Of, uh, of, of the process and he's going to hopefully bring in lots more people. Into the process over this spring, summer, so that. A proposal that's going to be well thought out and, and, and supported. By, um, by, uh, the citizens of Bilton. Thank you very much.
Okay. I think so.
Let's move on to consent calendar. Um, anyone want to pull anything off the consent counter before we go through it?
Uh, just for a correction on the minutes, um, just to, uh, reflected a, a desire for the. Discussion on Native American People Day, just had been phrased as Indigenous People Day. So if that could be corrected, that'd be the only note I have.
Okay, so noted. Yeah, this will be minutes of January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, regular city council meeting, unless the plans be ratified and approved. Uh, to date for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four and. Resolution twenty four oh one, resolution of the city council, city Bilton, California, making salary adjustment for all regular full-time employees. Uh, I will bring it back to the council for a possible motion.
And move to approve.
I'll second.
Um, as amended, please.
Oh, as amended.
As amended.
Thank you, counselor.
Okay, councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
All right.
And Mayor King.
All right. And we will move on to presentations, not seeing any presentations, public carrying is not seeing any of those either. And then we will also move on to council member comments and items.
Moi?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to thank the city. We had, uh, quite a little bit of a atmospheric river, I believe they call it, and it seemed to me that driving around the city. The drains looked clearer and cleaner than they did with the last rain, and it just seemed like the city weathered this storm. Even better than we did the last one. And I know that that's due to all the pre-planning and the maintenance, and just wanted to thank city for having that under control. Thank you.
Thank you. Hudson.
Um, yeah, thank you. I wanted to talk, and I mentioned this before in passing, but, uh, I wanted to kind of bring up the idea. And it's really more of a concern of where we have our, uh, Riverview Park and our BMX track and the. Uh, road right next to it. Uh, this is something that hasn't been pressing the last two weeks because of the rains and everything else, but. Those, the, there is just so much, uh, crossing by. Little ones, uh, to and up from the Riverview tri- Riverview Park area to the BMX track, even when bicycles aren't. On the BMX track, like kids ride those bikes, you go over the hill, they go down the other side, and it's just a road right there. And I feel like we're just asking for trouble. When we're expanding, uh, the activities that are going on at the, at the range down there. And I love everything that we're doing, but I think we should pay attention to getting a fence up or, uh, trying to reroute that road, uh. To the side that's closer to the Williamson property. I know we had talked in the past about potentially maybe. Uh, seeing if there was like an eager, eager access point there. So I just kind of want to put that in everybody's wheelhouse, because I think if we don't pay attention to that, something will get hurt someday. I would like that not to happen.
Okay, so noted. David?
I just wanted to bring up a continuing, so, um, last council I brought up, uh, we were starting to see an, in. Increase of RV parking over on Valley Vineyard Circle. And at this point, we've had RV parking. Every single day since that meeting. So I just want to reiterate that it seems like that's a growing issue and a growing trend. So. We may need to start looking at solutions for that so that, um, we can have RVs parked in appropriate areas.
Hey, and I did see some parked out there as well. So it's real what you're talking about. So can you refresh my memory? Are we, are we, is that like an upcoming agenda item to address, reserve something we're doing about that?
I'm just complaining again.
No, no.
Consensus, just to say, please bring it back, which is, I think, what we're doing, right?
I can, let's, I can talk to our sheriff first. Before we do that. And since that's becoming an issue, I'll talk to Mark about that. Make sure, at least get him tagged.
Thank you very much.
All right. I do not have anything, any, uh, um, well, I'm gonna dovetail on what you said, Alicia, is I did see our guys out there and I'm gonna commend them, Rose. Uh, for getting the guys out there, you know, I have that catch basin right by my house and they were out there and, you know, knee deep water, digging the, the. Drains out so all that water could flush out. So, yeah, good job. Okay, committee reports. Oh, wait, written communications.
Nothing.
Any written communications? No, committee reports. Alicia?
Yeah, so last week we had, uh, our, what we hope to be one of our final for this year, um, joint. Use committee meetings between the Bilton Union School District and the City of Bilton. We have been diligently reviewing our joint use agreement. And we think we are at the point where we have a rough final draft. It's being sent to both sides councils. We feel really good about it. It's taken a very long time to get through each of those nitty gritty, um. Uh, items. And as soon as both councils sign off on it, we'll bring it to our board and the school board, and then we'll have an updated agreement.
Okay, good, perfect. Hudson?
For the joint use for the, uh, city building areas on the Bilton Union School grounds. So like the gym, museum, where we have our apple pool. And then how we facilitate. Repairs, occup- occupancy of the building.
So like solving high school can use our facilities, vice versa?
It's for Bilton.
Just for Bilton.
Just for Bilton. So the city can use Bilton's facility, Bilton Union District and vice versa.
Okay, cool. Uh, I didn't have any committee reports to report.
Um, so attended the ground, our groundwater, okay. I don't know, the GSA groundwater sustainable. Yep, that one. So attended that today, um, and there was a presentation of five point five million dollars to the. Systems across the Sanino's Valley. And so I want to thank Rose and everyone else who was involved with that to make that happen, so that we have funding for. Improving our water conservation efforts. And it sounds like a lot of great work you guys will be doing. So thank you for all the effort and time you put into making that happen.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, the only thing that I went to, and I don't know John was, John was probably not there, but it was the, um. Ad hoc committee for the aquatics. And it was basically. Finalizing, um, the donors to contact to try to get funding for the swimming pool. And once we get through that, hopefully we'll have enough money to put that. Really expensive Olympic pool in the ground. Thanks. Uh, I mean, no other committee reports, and we want to business items. Number four. This is a resolution number twenty four zero three, a resolution of the city council, city build California approving applications. For specific grant funds from budget act twenty twenty three. Nineteen five sixty one B and twenty four, city of Bilton saying as river trail. And the lead on this will be Rose's house.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. As you're aware, the city has been awarded grant funds from the state in the form of an earmark for four hundred twenty five thousand dollars. This is designated for the same as regional trail, um, saying is river regional. Um, the program is going to be administered through the California Department of Parks. And as part of our compliance, this is the first things that we need to do is for the city. To approve the resolution, which designates the city manager or their designee to enter into contact with the state of California to comply with. Implement, um, and, uh, proceed with the rest of the project. So. With that, uh, we offer the resolution and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from the council for staff? No?
No? I, I do. Um, so that, uh, so the money that's coming for the, for the Riverview Trail, um, it's being administered by the state or by local?
That's going to be administered by the state to the city. So the city will be continuing the project expenditures. It's made that contributes towards the four hundred twenty five thousand. At that point, we were, we're going to administer our grant. Um, for that monies, but the state's the one who holds it and will be reimbursing the city.
So my, my question is. Oh, so they'll re- they'll reimburse us for expenses incurred?
It's always a reimbursement.
Is it via the plan that's already amended, or can we, can we do what we can? Cause the Riverview Trail, right? Like, do we have plans for the Riverview Trail?
We don't have improvement plans for that at this point, no.
Okay.
Um, the monies will, will fund the upfront portion of the project, concept, design, environmental.
Okay, does the Riverview Trail, like, propose to extend to San Yanez or to Solvang, or what are we?
The larger Riverview Trail is supposed to go from the very west end of Bilton all the way into Santinas.
Uh huh.
So there is that regional trail program that is part of this. Now, we are not. Our project isn't building that full trail system.
Right.
It's for our section, correct?
Correct.
Well, then that's, so that's my question about the money expenditure and like where the limitations are. So like, let's just say. The trail, like, we use the money to, uh, because there's a trail down there now, right?
Not official.
Not, not an official trail, but we have easements, we have the, the connection route.
We have most easements correct between Riverview Park and just, um, past Avenue of Flags.
Yeah, and there, there are walking trails though from Bilton. And I don't know, do they connect? Could we spend the money to make sure the walking trails connect or at least go on our currently held property? Or is it, would that be a legitimate spend of our money, or would it just be for some other project?
No, connection points is part of, of that. Yeah, but, and, but again, this monies is for the design and concept for that. But yes, connection points to wherever we need to, to. Towards industrial way or the other points of designation, um, would be included as part of that.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify, since I've been on most of these meetings. Um, our portion would just be in the city of Bilton and the county will pick up.
Yeah.
And then connect their portion on the nor- or the south side of the river. All the way down to Alisal. And then when it, when it turns back in a city at any point. Solvang would be financially responsible for that. And then if it goes through tribal lands, they would be financially responsible for that as well. There's a lot of grants being sought after for this, um, through the tribe, to the county, through both cities.
And we have one joint together, correct?
He.
With all of us together, we're applying for one together.
Correct. So we're trying to get the funds for this entire trip.
Okay, yeah, no, it's, so I'm not really concerned with the state contract is that, you know, we were then beholden or confined to a certain level, right? We don't. And, and so that's why, that's my curiosity, because there, there are trails down there now. And so this idea and this concept, uh, is still in flux, is my understanding. So if we sign this contract, this is going to be just for the initial concept review type stuff, and. It's not necessarily going to bind us to anything.
Well, we're, we're going to do as much work with these funds as we can up through full design of our portion, if we're able to.
Yeah.
Um, we believe we should be able to with, with that amount of money.
Right, this grant that we got for that is just for that.
Right.
If we go out to a bid and say, hey, we need a design, we need a D A, E I R, we need all this, that will be reimbursed by the state to one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars.
And these are, I understand what you're saying, that there are trails, there are footpaths and trails there now. But what we are doing are, are formalizing the actual path and trails that we will want people. Um, and, you know, pedestrians, cyclists, et cetera, to ride through.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, uh, let's call Mr. Dorwin up to discuss this.
John Dorwin, one oh four Six Flag Circle, Bilton, California, resident since nineteen eighty eight. As I understand it, this money is coming from the. As I understand it, this money is coming from the state of California through the efforts of, um, Assemblyman Greg Hart. And we're talking about, uh, four hundred twenty five thousand dollars. My concern is that. We are going to be crossing Zaka Creek. And that is going to trigger. And E I R for endangered species compliance. And we're going to have National Marine Fisheries Service nymphs involved in this process. And I think, uh, we may not have enough money to comply with section five. Of the resolution within the grant agrees to comply with all applicable federal. State, local laws, ordinances, rules, regulations and guidelines. So I'm looking at our general plan. Conservation oceans, uh, open space section, uh. Pages fifteen and sixteen that talks about, uh, Southern Steelhead. And I think our general plan is not accurate as to what they're talking about there, but it does trigger. Uh. A review for Endangered Species Act. I'm not sure that our city has ever done compliance. With Endangered Species Act and had a full review of Zaka Creek. And I think that's the Pandora's box here that we're going to be, uh. Opening. And, uh, as I understand it, there is a project manager at S B CAG right now. A Mr. Casavolo, uh, who's working on this. And then there's a, a press release saying that there's a biological survey being conducted. By a consultant from East one oh one to Riverview Park. Uh, I'd like to know who's doing the biological study because if it's the same people who did our general plan, I don't think it's going to be adequate. I think the council. Has an opportunity. And a responsibility to say, what does ESA compliance look like if we're going to be crossing? Zaka Creek with pedestrians to get from East Buellton to West Buellton and back again. Do we understand what an E I R for Zaka Creek crossing looks like? And it's going to trigger potentially an evaluation of all of Zaka Creek within the city boundaries. And, uh, do we have a mitigation plan? Under the Endangered Species Act ready for review. I, you know, I'm, I'm concerned. I like the idea of a river trail, spent a lot of time. My kids down by the river when they were growing up. Then all along that, that area, but. I think we better be careful about the triggers here because, uh, I think we're going to get into Southern Steelhead and environmental. Species review. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I will bring it back to, uh, anybody on Zoom, Linda, from the public.
No, sir.
Any questions from staff? Any questions from staff? No, I'll bring it back to council, uh, for, uh. Further review and possible questions.
I have a question. Um, so what Mr. Dormer was just talking about was potential, uh. ESA and sequoia impacts of this project. Would the grant potentially go to pay for some of that?
Yes, it's supposed to cover upfront costs for the project. The city has not entered into any agreements to start any of the work at this point. We haven't done any, um, RFPs for consultant work. When we do move forward, we would be referencing and looking into other documents that may have been done by other agencies. And that's going to be part of the scope of work. Um, but money should be covered, whether it. We know that it fully covers. I don't know. I don't have any costs provided, um, from any consultants yet for the work. But this project, as the mayor had mentioned, this is our portion of the larger trail, um, system. And the larger trail system as a whole is also included in the county's program. And they are doing a master E I R for everything off of that.
Right. And I, and I think that's the whole point. The whole point of this funding is that we now, um, have, rather than using. City funds for this, we got that grant from the state to start doing these. And so if there are any. Federal compliances, we have to do state compliances. All of that is going to be funded out of this hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. So, or sorry, four hundred twenty five thousand dollars. Um, we're in the infancy stage of this, obviously. And so now all these, these monies that we're going to use for that, fortunately for us, is going to be paid for by the state. Now, if it triggers something, John, that'll be, that'll be sought out when we get to that. Um, obviously we're going to comply with everything, state, federal law and whatever the case is. And if, if there's any, uh, species, um, that gets triggered in this particular zone or area, then. That's going to be what we're going to do when we do all these environmental impact studies. So. If it doesn't pan out, doesn't pan out, you know, we're not going to just go, well, we're not going to do what the feds say and we're just going to do it anyways. That's, that's not going to happen. So basically what this before us today is, is for us to just say, yes, we're going to move forward with this four hundred twenty five thousand dollars to start the ball rolling. Okay? Anybody else? Any discussion?
I have one question on the, the resolution on section three says. That the city council certifies the application has been reviewed, understands and agrees to the general provisions contained in the contract shown in this procedural guide. Uh, I don't see that here. Um, I'm assuming that's reviewed by staff.
The procedural guide isn't part of this. It's just part of the grant documents as a whole. It's not part of the, um. The resolution. And this is the document, this resolution is taken specifically from the state and no attachments to it. This is what we are to be bringing to our council. So we're not missing any particular documents.
I understand, but we, we weren't seeing the, the contract itself though, right?
Well.
No.
I, I think what this is, Hudson, is just saying this is what you're going to comply with. Right.
Well, it's generally when you get grants from the state or federal government, at least with the high school. What they're referring to in that is that you are going to comply with their right to audit. You're going to comply with how to get the reimbursement, meaning you can't just tell them that you spent four hundred thousand, you need to submit X, Y and Z. And in doing so, you can't just not go out for RFP, like you have to follow all the rules that they have in place for procurement, for. You know, investigation, all those things. So in general, this, you're not. There is no contract other than you receive the grant funds and you abide, you agree to abide by their rules for procuring the monies from them, the payouts.
Right, that's the way I view it too.
So, yeah. You, I, I, in my work in the county, I'm not totally unfamiliar with, with contracts, how that works. Um, typically do see the contract stuff before I say, uh, we agree to the provisions contained within.
The, this is just the guidelines, what they're, what they're telling us to do.
Yeah, and doing my due diligence as, as the city council member is saying that I've, I've done these things, I can't say that. I can say I'm relying on staff to do that and I'm sure that they have, but that's what, that's what this is.
Okay. Anyone else? I will bring it back for a possible motion.
I'd move to approve resolution number twenty four oh three. Do you want me to, I have to read out the?
No.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second it. Hey, Linda.
Hey, councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
All right.
And Mayor King.
Okay, um, did he give you a city manager's report?
Scott did not, but I do have an update to provide for you this evening that I received this afternoon. So I have confirmation from our contractor for Village Park that, um. All the park equipment, uh, are in his possession. And pending rain, work should start on Monday at Village Park.
Awesome.
And. If we get a full sunny week without any issues, knock on wood, and everything goes well, the work should be complete next week by Friday.
So, man, that's good. Just a question.
Um, yes, very highly unlikely, but yeah, go ahead. Unusual, I should say, but go ahead.
I just wanted, does that, that's for the swings and the shade structure for both items? Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, anything from our, uh, councillor?
Not a thing, sir.
Okay, then I will adjourn this meeting until the next meeting on Friday, February twenty second. All right.